All right, welcome everybody. I have 4:30 so call this meeting to order. So we've got the roll call. We have Sean Callen, Julie Chutney, Tom Chiappa,
Here.
David Christofoli, Jim McKenzie's here, Krista Norfleet, and Sean Anmak.
Here.
All right. So I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first thing in our agenda is the annual public hearing presentation. And that begins with our update on the district-wide safety plan.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So today's, we are, today we're killing two birds with one stone. Annually, we are required to hold two public hearings, one for our district-wide safety plan and one for the code of conduct. So we're going to start with our update on the district-wide safety plan. Really just two primary changes to the district-wide safety plan this year. Back in December, the district had a scheduled review with FEMA and representatives from the Oswego County Emergency Management Office as well as representative from the nuclear plants to review our radiological emergency preparedness plan. We were required to update that plan and buildings were required to update the building individual plans to bring them in line with guidance from FEMA and from the Oswego County Emergency Management Office. The district-wide radiological emergency preparedness plan has been updated and added to the district-wide safety plan as Appendix C. The other major change to the district-wide safety plan this year has been being in compliance with the requirement that all school districts and BOSI's Boards of Cooperative Educational Services for the 22, 23, or excuse me, 23, 24 school year include in their district-wide safety plans a plan for remote instruction in the event of a communicable disease or other emergency that would cause us to close down again. In order to create that plan, the district-wide safety committee used as the foundation the reopening plan from COVID. The plan required that we ensure the availability of devices and internet access to all students, that we include a provision of special education, providing special education and related services to students with disabilities, and that we outlined all the expectations for time spent in different remote modalities. In other words, how much time students will spend synchronously versus asynchronously. So that plan has been updated and has been added as Appendix D of the district-wide safety plan. Shifting gears to the code of conduct. Our legal firm, the Ferrara-Furenza Law Firm, reviewed our code of conduct. It had been, I believe, several years since we had had the legal team review the code of conduct. There had been some internal edits made to the code of conduct. This year, we asked legal to take a look at it. So they did make a number of changes to the code of conduct, recommended changes, primarily just around language and definitions that either were not legally responsible to include in the code of conduct or that perhaps were singletons. I think I gave you the definition, the example of the definition of defamation. It's not a violation of the code of conduct. It doesn't appear anywhere else in the code of conduct, but we had it listed in our terms for definition. So they cleaned up some of that language for us. Were required annually to update the list of our Dignity Act coordinators. So that has been brought up to date. The other primary change to the code of conduct is removal of our attendance policy. Some of the things that we had in the code are information that exists elsewhere in the district, but that if we were to update in one place, we would have to make sure that we updated in the code of conduct as well. Attendance is an example of that. The district is required to have a comprehensive attendance policy for all students. We also had the attendance policy embedded in our code of conduct. That leaves our successors to, if we changed the attendance policy, to also remember to change the code of conduct. And because we're not required to have the attendance policy in the code of conduct, it was recommended that we remove that. Finally, as a communication and clarity piece, both internally and for families, we made in addition to this year's code of conduct. In the past, we have not clearly defined the consequences for behavior and violations of the code of conduct, nor have we clearly defined what we mean by some of the violations of the code of conduct. So we have inserted two different charts at the end of code of, of the code of conduct. One is a range of district responses for behavioral offenses. Level one responses, level two responses, level three responses. Level one responses are for, to address minor infractions or first infractions for students. And then the discipline becomes progressive as we move through level two responses and then level three responses. Some violations of the code of conduct do necessitate that a student advance immediately to a level three response, such as a weapon on campus or a violent or disruptive incident. But in general, it is the policy and the practice of the district to practice what we call progressive discipline, where we respond at level one to the greatest extent possible and really take opportunities to teach students our expectations and what we mean by our, by the code of conduct and how we expect students to conduct themselves in school. The other piece to that, and this is just an example from the code of conduct at this point, is we have clearly, more clearly articulated what we mean by an offense of the code of conduct. So here are the first few offenses. And we have defined with our attorneys what those violations mean and the range of consequences that are associated with those violations. This is both a guide for our school teachers and administrators so that we are being clear when a student is facing a consequence for a violation of the code of conduct, but parents as well. So for example, when we say that a student has engaged in a computer or electronic communication misuse, we can refer to the definition and identify the behavior that has taken place. It's a piece that has been missing in our student management process and we think it'll be a step in the right direction for both administrators and for families. And that's it for the update unless there are any questions.
I had a question relative to, I mean, it was a great legal document, but where do we have it in a simplified form accessible? Because when you go to, when you go online, it's there, but you have to go down to get to those points. And, and then also how, when is that first delivered to the students and how often, you know, repeated?
So we are still in need of generating a one-page document that is a code of conduct summary. We will do that once the board has officially approved the code of conduct after the waiting period from our public hearing. And what will be most useful to buildings and to families really is this, it will be about a four-page document about what the, what the expectations are in terms of behavior, what our violations are and what the consequences are. We will also include, you know, the extended code of conduct includes the responsibilities of students, the responsibilities of staff, the responsibility of visitors to school. We will include some of that also as well in the plain language version, but we won't do that until this has officially been approved by you all.
And at that point, would it be implemented by administration when students come in first year and then reiterated as we go along? How would it be out there and present?
So, well, most of the school buildings have their own student handbook that they insert the plain language version.
Great.
Question, Amanda.
Sure.
I'm looking specifically at the dress code section, which begins, I think, at page 12.
Yep.
And the, the final bullet point under dress code says, "Any dress or appearance that constitutes a disruption of the educational process." Who makes that determination? And quite frankly, what does that mean? Because that is, of all the language that I read through the dress code, that's kind of the squishiest language we have here. And just based upon the way I saw people get off the school bus and get out of cars last year, I would suggest that some of them meet this criteria. So I'm curious, what's intended to be encapsulated under this? What does it really mean? And who is the arbiter of whether or not it constitutes a disruption to the educational process?
So I think the first, the, the first person who would identify that is obviously the classroom teacher and whether or not what a student is wearing is becoming a distraction to the students around them. There are obviously some bullet points that articulate things that are specifically prohibited. And that last bullet really is meant to be a catch-all in that if we haven't, if a student isn't wearing something that meets one of those other bullet criteria, right? But that is a distraction, I don't know, or, or a safety hazard. I, like, I'm thinking roller skates, right? It's not specifically that you can't wear roller skates. It's not a bullet point, but certainly that would be a distraction and a safety issue for, as, as something to wear to school. So it'd be the teacher and the principal's discretion to identify and consult with the student about what he or she was wearing is not appropriate.
I guess my concern would be is this sort of opens the door that it's not going to be applied equally and evenly. You know, just thinking of things that I observed last year, I can recall many a day when I saw somebody wearing flags representing different things as capes.
Yep.
And they went through the school day wearing that. And I can think of many a student who got out of cars or out of buses wearing pajama bottoms. And yet I know some students got dress coded for pajama bottoms while other people don't. And while I appreciate that it may be a function of what the belief is you have access to for clothing, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we either have to apply it to everybody or we need to not be applying it at all. And I'm not, I'm not sure we're doing that currently. So what are we going to do moving forward to make sure we are?
So that is, that is a topic that was also brought to my attention last year that, that some students were being, it was permitted for some students to wear certain things in the school building and, and other students were dress coded for it. And some of the implication was that perhaps it had to do with body size and, you know, that one student looks fine in a pair of leggings, but another student who maybe the, the teacher or the administrator deemed that the leggings were too tight, that that student was called in about the dress code. That is something that we need to work to standardize across the district because we can't obviously be addressing students differently. I know that's something that Mr. Lanigan worked on with the high school faculty last year in terms of making sure that we were being careful about not dress coding students, so to speak, based on body composition, but rather what is appropriate, what's not appropriate. But I do agree that a student wearing a flag to school would fit the bill of something that is distracting to the educational environment. It's not a piece of clothing, right? And, and if it is a distraction to the classroom environment, that that's an example that we would address.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. I just have a couple of questions. I also have, I was very challenged reading this particular section. I'm wondering, I feel like that's asking a lot of our teachers to, you know, address these dress code violations in the classroom, personally. I, I think that it doesn't take a, we should, stopping these students at the door when they're violating a dress code. Furthermore, I mean, I'm not going to debate on what, if a crop top or under, shorts that look like underwear are appropriate for school, I would say they probably constitute disruption to any teenage boy or whoever. However, I, I wonder if this no hats or hoodies should not even be on here because it's not, it's absolutely not enforced. So I don't know why things on here are on here. If we're not going to enforce them, let's get, let's get them off.
Because, because it depends on the grade level that we're working with, right? At the high school, hats and hoodies are permitted, but at the elementary school, they are not. And so we did administratively have a lengthy discussion about this bulleted list in regards to the dress code. We did seek legal advice about, about changing that bulleted list because, for examples, headbands are on there. And we have lots of elementary school children who wear headbands to school. That's not something that's enforced.
Right.
The, the, the legal guidance was that if we start taking items off of that, off of that bulleted list, then we don't really have grounds to address different, different apparel.
So to your point about the elementary school, I understand that elementary school, middle school, high school should be slightly different. There's not much continuity between the middle school and the high school. I know you cannot walk in the door at the middle school without, with pajama pants on. Yes, you can walk in the door here with pajama pants on. By the way, you can wear them at the grade school as well, but. So I'm just finding, I'm struggling that these kids in the seventh and eighth grade are told, hey, you can't wear pajamas here. But when you go to high school, you can wear pajamas. Like, I just, I'm really, how, how can we streamline it so that our students are having the expectations, at least minimally, when they come to seventh grade? I don't know if that's a matter of talking with the principals so that everyone's on the same page. I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
To, to an extent, there is some administrative, you know, some administrative leeway. And I think when, when you say setting some expectations, I, I think that is what the middle school is trying to do in terms of prohibiting pajama pants, is trying to communicate to students that really, as a student, your business is school. And as a place of business, you shouldn't be wearing pajama pants to school.
Right.
Do I fully agree that yes, it needs to be applied consistently across the district? Yes, we do.
Lastly, can you talk to the, your statement on progressive discipline? Because I'm very familiar with progressive discipline, but I think that it means different things in different organizations.
Okay.
So, how is that going to look here?
Sure. So the philosophy that we are, that we are trying to work, and honestly, and it's a work in progress for our administrative team. We are a largely, relatively new administrative team in terms of myself and several of our principals. We have some folks who have been in the district a long time and doing things that, you know, I think doing business the way they always have, so to speak. The, the model of progressive discipline that I have talked about with the principals is really, unless it is a, a major violation of the code of conduct, unless it's physical contact with another student, whether it's abuse of drugs or alcohol in school, weapons possession, we should be starting at the lower end of the response spectrum and teaching students our expectations for them being in our school. Not all of our children come to our schools with the same behavioral expectations in their homes that we have in our school buildings. And so to, so to levy, for example, an in-school suspension for a student who has been, I don't know, late to class three times or, or is unprepared for class five times, isn't teaching that student necessarily to be prepared for class because the, the discipline consequence doesn't necessarily fit the behavior? If the behavior becomes escalated or repeated, so if you have a student who, I don't know, let's say, has, has a verbal altercation with a student in the hallway, that might be initially in level one apparent conference, right? If that student then continues to engage students in verbal altercations or if the verbal altercation then becomes a physical altercation, obviously, we move up the, the response level. But initially, the point is initially, we shouldn't be levying the heaviest consequences for the most minor disciplines.
I understood that part. I guess to just make it a little simpler.
Okay.
The student who is disrespectful, using vulgar language to the teacher on Monday, gets talking to. Tuesday, gets talking to. Wednesday, I'm just wondering what, what the progressive discipline timeline is for behaviors like that.
There isn't necessarily a scripted timeline. I think we have to talk about what each individual student is bringing to the table. I think that, that some students who fully understand and their behavior is intentional in terms of that behavior toward their teacher is in a different situation than a student who we might be working with who doesn't fully understand that that behavior is not appropriate in school. I don't think we can say that there is a one-size-fits-all for every student who walks through our door because every student is bringing something different to school.
So even after, even after you speak, like, this is a learning process and a teaching process. So even after the second time and the third time, the child still doesn't understand that, that, that that's not right, when, when do you expect that it's going to finally click that they do, they do understand that it's wrong?
Well, I don't know that we will always necessarily bring a student to that understanding and that is where they would progress to, to a harsher, harsher consequence. And those consequences might not necessarily be visible to folks, right? A student who is held after school for a detention or is, who is in ISS, that might not be a visible response publicly to other people because the student reports to school and is placed quietly in ISS. So I think the responses aren't always public or understood. What we do know is that some of our students need behavior modifications. We need, we need behavior plans from some, for some of our kiddos. And we also know that we need increased mental health support for the, the trauma that students bring to school. Unfortunately, we know that the trauma that students bring to school often is projected as misbehavior. So there's that component, too.
I think, I think the public or what, the visibility of like ISS or what isn't seen by the public, I think that's secondary. I think the priority should be the disruption in the classroom to the students that want and understand the, the learning environment and to the teachers. So I'm not necessarily worried about, you know, the public. What, it's really like, what about the kids that are in the classroom? What about the teachers that are in the classroom?
Yeah, or to put it a different way, you know, I appreciate that some kids come from households that don't have the same expectations that we have in school and that some kids' behavioral issues are purposeful and some kids' behavioral issues are not purposeful. But it doesn't change the level of disruption to the other students in the classroom. So as much as I appreciate that we're trying to work with each individual student, what are we doing to ensure that the people who aren't disruptive aren't being disruptive and are getting the education that we're promising them? Because I'm, I'm not sure we're meeting that piece of it right now. I think that the disruptors continue to disrupt and those who don't disrupt continue to sit in the classrooms that are being disrupted.
So I, I would argue that that is perhaps an oversimplification at different points. And as I suggested to you at the end of last week, I think one of the things that we need to engage in is discussion around the, the legal rights of all students. There are students who, who attend our schools who, if their, if their behavior is a reflection of their disability or a 504 plan or something else that's going on with the student, we have limited legal responses for what we can do in terms of, of consequences for that student. And I know that a couple of situations that have come to our attention have fallen under that umbrella. And that's not to say that our Committee on Special Education doesn't meet to discuss whether or not the program we have in place is appropriate for that student, if we need to work on behavioral plans for students or even our general education students who are showing consistent behaviors. We engage our, our behavior coach to work with teachers on creating behavior plans for students. So I do understand that, that students present disruptions to classrooms at different times. I think the concept of being able to remove a student who is being disruptive as a general practice is a violation of students' rights. You know, we have to have other plans in place, other measures in place.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Do I actually adjourn this meeting? We're just going to say the meeting's over. This first part's over. We've got six minutes till the next meeting. So we'll see everybody then.
I think I think the public or what the visibility of like ISS or what isn't seen by the public, I think that's secondary. I think the priority should be the disruption in the classroom to the students that want and understand that the learning environment and to the teachers. So I'm not necessarily worried about, you know, the public. It's really like, what about the kids that are in the classroom? What about the teachers that are in the classroom?
Or to put a different way, you know, I appreciate that some kids come from households that don't have the same expectations that we have in school, and that some kids' behavioral issues are purposeful, and some kids' behavioral issues are not purposeful, but it doesn't change the level of disruption to the other students in the classroom. So as much as I appreciate that we're trying to work with each individual student, what are we doing to ensure that the people who aren't disruptive aren't being disruptive and are getting the education that we're promising them? Because I'm I'm not sure we're meeting that piece of it right now. I think that the disruptors continue to disrupt, and those who don't disrupt continue to sit in the classrooms that are being disrupted.
So I I would argue that that is perhaps an oversimplification at different points. And as I suggested to you at the end of last week, I think one of the things that we need to engage in is discussion around the the legal rights of all students. There are students who who attend our schools who, if their if their behavior is a reflection of their disability or a 504 plan or something else that's going on with the student, we have limited legal responses for what we can do in terms of of consequences for that student. And I know that a couple of situations that have come to our attention have fallen under that umbrella. And that's not to say that our Committee on Special Education doesn't meet to discuss whether or not the program we have in place is appropriate for that student, if we need to work on behavioral plans for students, or even our general education students who are showing consistent behaviors. We engage our our behavior coach to work with teachers on creating behavior plans for students. So I do understand that that students present disruptions to classrooms at different times. I think the concept of being able to remove a student who is being disruptive as a general practice is a violation of students' rights. You know, we have to have other plans in place, other measures in place.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Do I actually adjourn this meeting? We're just gonna say the meeting's over. This first part's over. We've got six minutes till the next meeting, so we'll see everybody then.
Okay. Well. Thank you. All right. Do I actually adjourn this meeting? We're just gonna say the meeting's over. This first part's over. We've got six minutes till the next meeting, so we'll see everybody then. Okay. Well. Thank you. All right. All right. Welcome back, everybody. I'd like to call or order our regular meeting. I guess maybe I go through roll call again. Sean Callen.
Here.
Julie Chetney.
Here.
Tom Chapa.
Here.
Dave Christofouli.
Here.
Jim McKenzie's here.
Kristen Norfleet.
Here.
And Sean Onmok.
Here.
Our student representative is not here today. So the next agenda item is floor to the public. Diane, did we have anybody? Nobody. Wonderful. So we have two items under Board of Education today. Item A is a discussion piece, which is our facilities use, process, and fee schedule. As some background, it was about a year ago now that the last board approved a facilities use and process fee schedule. After hearing back a bit from some community, the board decided to ask a committee to get together. So we had a committee of facilities people, we had people from the superintendent's office, we had board members, David was on that. And their task was to review, update if necessary, in which they did find some updates that they recommended to us. So as part of this, for the transparency and open discussion, I ask that this be put under here as a point of discussion, so that the group can discuss in any way they want, so that this document is out, it's attached to the agenda, and the public gets to see it, with the intent that if we can get this together, we would vote on this updated document at our next meeting. So with that.
I'll go first.
Sure.
The document in the current form, I think, needs more work. It's it was intended, as I understand it, to be a two-page, like, quick reference guide, with then a much deeper document available for perusal. But I think that the document, the way it's been put together, it ends on Page Two with a classification of groups into six categories. And in my mind, it immediately begs the question of why have you categorized people into groups? And what's the point of the groups? What does it mean? And we didn't include that in this document. And as I said, I understand that there is a much more comprehensive document that talks about that, but I think if our point is having a, you know, two-page informational guide, we need to at least sum it up after the group classifications as to why we've gone through the effort of classifying groups. That's Piece One. Piece Two is, I actually have an issue with the group classifications. My concern is that it may be a matter of opinion, but I think that there are feeder programs in our district that would clearly fall under nonprofit Group Two. Off the top of my head, I would cite things like Oswego Youth Basketball, the Lacrosse Club, the Football Club, Little League, that would be required, as I understand it, to pay certain fees associated with using facilities, like, for instance, the football field, that are not charged to athletic teams. I would suggest that those are feeder programs for our middle school and high school athletics, and that we need to be supporting them. As a school district community, we need to be supporting the more global Oswego community athletic programs that benefit our district ultimately. And, you know, requiring a certificate of insurance is one thing, but requiring them to pay to use, you know, a football field is another thing. To me, that's something separate and distinct from access of the press box in the stadium or the lights, things like that. But to be able to, for instance, go on to fields at the middle school, and we're charging for that for a feeder program for our sports, I think is not something we should be doing as a school district.
I agree with everything Kristen said. I don't understand where the third page is. I'd like to know what are the I know we had some costs at some point, but it doesn't really tell me what nonprofit Group Number Two is or is not paying. Same with Number Three, I'm assuming, is getting it for free because we're not charging? I'm not sure.
I think we should probably have Cindy come in again for all the new board members, as far as which ones were feeders, and because she was the one that pretty much classified who was and who wasn't. And what we charge in here, the whole fee thing, was just so we didn't so we broke even for the overtime for the custodians to clean up, for any cost for the people using our fields.
So what I'm hearing is we can get together the bigger document, and we can share that. I may not have been on target. All right. We can absolutely look at the bigger document and make that public and share that with everybody. The smaller document was really at our Legals' advice, if I remember correctly, to have something a little more succinct to put out forward-facing, but it would be absolutely fine if we had the bigger document. I also wonder, and I do not know the exact answer to this, but the difference between maybe nonprofit Group Two and private group, I believe what made me think of this is what David said about breaking even, is that if you are a non-for-profit group legally, we may have to be different than if you are a private group who charges for things. From a school district standpoint, I believe there's something about not gifting. We cannot be gifting things to entities with public funds. So as part of this, I think it would be great to have Cindy in next week, because unless there's unless there's an overwhelming consensus by the group that we need major revisions, I think this should come in front of us with our AD next time. And we could always make adjustments through amendments, through Parliament, through Robert's rules, but this is another document that came from a committee that spent months looking at it. So I think it would be good to have the whole document. I think it'd be good to have Cindy in. And I would personally like a clarification about the legality of the charges, and wondering if that's why we're differentiating some of these.
Right. But Jim, both these nonprofit groups, One and Two, are both 501(c)(3)'s. It's the only differentiation is one charges and one doesn't. So it'd be like, I guess, a church. I don't know what they're talking about. Is it a church that uses it, and they're not charging kids to come in and use the gym versus Oswego Youth Soccer, who is charging, but they're still a non-for-profit?
Sure. I see what you're saying. I was specifically referring to the private group versus the other ones.
Right, right.
But I can see what you're saying about Group One versus Group Two.
Right.
And maybe we can get that addressed when Cindy's here as well. Why why was that unless you know David already? Why?
There was also a legal document from our legal department that said some of these that we had to charge because of if they paid or they made money, like a dance recital, please.
A dance recital is not a non-for-profit.
Right.
Dance recital is a lot different than.
Yeah. We're talking about all the youth sporting groups that are non-for-profit: soccer, Little League, lacrosse, all of those that are as well, they're also feeder programs. I'm talking I'm not talking about this lower private group, dance recitals, tournaments.
Yeah, some are for like the camps they have, baseball camps and stuff like that where they are charged in the summertime. They have a lot of them.
That's a good that's a good point. That's a great point. So the baseball camps, generally speaking, before COVID, I recall the Oswego Boys, Sean, you might be able to help me, basketball program did like a youth camp for younger Oswego City School District students who wanted to play basketball over the summer. And that said, basketball program might have charged 10 bucks a kid to help whatever fund. Maybe that's what you're talking about, Dave, as far as pro but usually these camps, they're being hosted by our high school teams.
Yeah, some of it was with the insurance, too, as far as if we were doing the insurance or if the coach or whoever that was doing that in the summertime, if they were even covered, if they had to get their own insurance.
Right.
So I think the best thing to do is have Cindy come in. And also, there is a document, too, with the legal thing that said there were reasons on there why we charged someone, not the others. So I think if we get that in our hands, that'll probably clarify a lot.
Yeah, I think this is a good starting point, and I think Cindy could offer some clarification. One thing that I would like to see, and I brought it up maybe two or three board meetings ago, is the deliverables after someone pays a fee, because I've I've heard a lot of feedback from these groups that go and pay the money, the conditions of the facilities that we're offering and now may having people pay us for. I think that we then have to deliver a field that's cut, a field that has lines on it. So there's there's two sides of this, and I really wanted to find as far as the deliverables after we accept payment and liability, you know, certificate of liability, what we're going to really deliver to.
I agree.
I just I agree with most of that and all the I think we need to get Cindy in here, differentiate the groups. Oswego's a small place, and if if you don't think that any one of these programs is a feeder program, you're you're kind of out of touch, because all these start now at like five, six, seven years old. And by the time you get to seventh grade, if you're not playing in one of these programs, you're not making the team. It's it's a sad reality. So these are all feeder programs, and if I don't know which ones have been classified as that, but I I know the Lacrosse Club is, Little League is, Leprechaun and Oswego Youth Basketball, Pop Warner. I mean, you go out of town and you see some of these these kids playing on their high school fields, and when we come and people can't even come here to play Pop Warner, because we have to have our games in Fulton. So there's a there's a lot of a lot of things going on here with our facilities and what can and can't be used and what you have to pay for them.
I think we I think we could use this, work on it and use it, and and have it be perceived as we're opening up to the Oswego community versus closing the door. So we just clean up some of the categories and be able to explain it really well. But as as Sean said, I mean, this is an opportunity for the school district to accept, you know, more more of the programs in our Oswego community and and help, you know, help them, which, at the end of the day, when they all come up into June, you know, middle school and high school, it's going to help us and and the budget that we have for athletics, specifically, just that piece.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Okay. Good discussion, and we'll pick this up next time. We'll get the additional documents out and make sure that everybody sees them as soon as possible. All right. Thank you. The next discussion is about our 2023-24 school liaisons. All right. So this is something we've talked about in meetings for a while. So there is a document that we drafted up to kind of govern how we would be acting with this. It is attached to the agenda. And so what we're looking at for as a board here is to discuss this and then decide this is something we're going to do, and how would we like to decide the assignment of schools? So, comments?
No, I was just gonna say, I I'm glad we have the document, and I think this is a great addition to it, as long as we have the the process in place that defines those guidelines. I I'm happy to do it. I'm glad we're doing it, so I appreciate the work on it all the way around.
Yeah, I'm ha I'm happy that through conversation and some outside guidance that we got, that we were able to refine. I think some of our initial discussions were a little blurry and could have caused some, you know, not not intentional, but, you know, just some of the byproducts of our not being clear with what the roles were at the beginning. I think this document really cleans that up and with direct purpose and what we're just how we're trying to help, that's it, and leave it at that. And
Little League that would be required, as I understand it, to pay certain fees associated with using facilities, like for instance, the football field, that are not charged to athletic teams. I would suggest that those are feeder programs for our middle school and high school athletics, and that we need to be supporting them. As a school district community, we need to be supporting the more global Oswego community athletic programs that benefit our district ultimately. And, you know, requiring a certificate of insurance is one thing, but requiring them to pay to use, you know, a football field is another thing. To me, that's something separate and distinct from access to the press box in the stadium, or the lights, things like that. But to be able to, for instance, go on to fields at the middle school, and we're charging for that for a feeder program for our sports, I think is not something we should be doing as a school district.
I agree with everything Kristen said. I don't understand where the third page is. I'd like to know what are the... I know we had some costs at some point, but it doesn't really tell me what nonprofit group number two is or is not paying. Same with number three, I'm assuming, is getting it for free because they're not charging? I'm not sure.
I think we should probably have Cindy come in again for all the new board members, as far as which ones were feeders. And because she was the one that pretty much classified who wasn't and who wasn't. And what we charge in here, the whole fee thing, was just so we broke even. For the overtime, for the custodians to clean up, for any cost for the people using our fields.
I may not have been on, sorry Matt. All right, we can absolutely look at the bigger document and make that public and share that with everybody. The smaller document was really at our legals' advice, if I remember correctly, to have something a little more succinct to put out forward facing. But it would be absolutely fine if we had the bigger document. I also wonder, and I do not know the exact answer to this, but the difference between maybe nonprofit group two and private group, I believe what made me think of this is what David said about breaking even, is that if you are a non-for-profit group legally, we may have to be different than if you are a private group who charges for things. From a school district standpoint, I believe there's something about not gifting. We cannot be gifting things to entities with public funds. So as part of this, I think it would be great to have Cindy in next week. Because unless there's an overwhelming consensus by the group that we need major revisions, I think this should come in front of us with our AD next time. And we could always make adjustments through amendments, through Parliament, through Robert's rules. But this is another document that came from a committee that spent months looking at it. So I think it would be good to have the whole document. I think it'd be good to have Cindy in. And I would personally like a clarification about the legality of the charges. And wondering if that's why we're differentiating some of these.
Right, but Jim, both these nonprofit groups, one and two, are both 501(c)(3)'s. It's the only differentiation is one charges and one doesn't. So it'd be like, I guess, a church. I don't know what they're talking about. Is it a church that uses it, and they're not charging kids to come in and use the gym? Versus a Oswego youth soccer who is charging, but they're still a non-for-profit?
Sure, I see what you're saying. I was specifically referring to the private group versus the other ones. But I can see what you're saying about group one versus group two. And maybe we can get that addressed when Cindy's here as well. Why was that, unless you know David already?
There was also a legal document from our legal department that said some of these that we had to charge. Because if they paid or they made money, like a dance recital, please.
A dance recital is not a non-for-profit.
Right.
Dance recital is a lot different than...
Yeah, we're talking about all the youth sporting groups that are non-for-profit. Soccer, Little League, lacrosse, all of those that are as well, they're also feeder programs. I'm not talking about this lower private group, dance recitals, tournaments.
Yeah, some are for like the camps they have, baseball camps and stuff like that where they are charged. In the summertime, they have a lot of them.
That's a good point, that's a great point. So the baseball camps, generally speaking, before COVID, I recall the Oswego Boys, Sean, you might be able to help me, basketball program did like a youth camp for younger Oswego City School District students who wanted to play basketball over the summer. And that said basketball program might have charged 10 bucks a kid to help whatever fund. Maybe that's what you're talking about, Dave. As far as pro... But usually these camps, they're being hosted by our high school teams.
Yeah, some of it was with the insurance too. As far as if we were doing the insurance or if the coach or whoever that was doing that in the summertime, if they were even covered, if they had to get their own insurance. So I think the best thing to do is have Cindy come in. And also, there is a document too of the legal thing that said there were reasons on there why we charged someone, not the others. So I think if we get that in our hands, that'll probably clarify a lot.
Yeah, I think this is a good starting point. And I think Cindy could offer some clarification. One thing that I would like to see, and I brought it up maybe two or three board meetings ago, is the deliverables after someone pays a fee. Because I've heard a lot of feedback from these groups that go and pay the money, the conditions of the facilities that we're offering, and now having people pay us for. I think that we then have to deliver a field that's cut, a field that has lines on it. So there's two sides of this. And I really wanted to find as far as the deliverables after we accept payment and liability, you know, certificate of liability, what we're going to really deliver to.
I agree.
I just, I agree with most of that and all the... I think we need to get Cindy in here, differentiate the groups. Oswego's a small place. And if you don't think that any one of these programs is a feeder program, you're kind of out of touch. Because all these start now at like five, six, seven years old. And by the time you get to seventh grade, if you're not playing in one of these programs, you're not making the team. It's a sad reality. So these are all feeder programs. And if, I don't know which ones have been classified as that, but I know the lacrosse club is, Little League is, Leprechaun and Oswego youth basketball, Pop Warner. I mean, you go out of town and you see some of these kids playing on their high school fields. And when we come, and people can't even come here to play Pop Warner because we have to have our games in Fulton. So there's a lot of things going on here with our facilities and what can and can't be used and what you have to pay for them.
I think we could use this, work on it and use it, and have it be perceived as we're opening up to the Oswego community versus closing the door. So we just clean up some of the categories and be able to explain it really well. But as Sean said, I mean, this is an opportunity for the school district to accept, you know, more of the programs in our Oswego community and help, you know, help them, which at the end of the day, when they all come up into June, you know, middle school and high school, it's going to help us in the budget that we have for athletics specifically, just that piece.
Anybody else? Okay, good discussion. And we'll pick this up next time. We'll get the additional documents out and make sure that everybody sees them as soon as possible. All right, thank you. The next discussion is about our 2023-24 school liaisons. All right, so this is something we've talked about in meetings for a while. So there is a document that we drafted up to kind of govern how we would be acting with this. It is attached to the agenda. And so what we're looking at for, as a board here, is to discuss this and then decide this is something we're going to do and how would we like to decide the assignment of schools. So, comments?
No, I was just going to say, I'm glad we have the document. And I think this is a great addition to it as long as we have the process in place that defines those guidelines. I'm happy to do it. I'm glad we're doing it. So I appreciate the work on it all the way around.
Yeah, I'm happy that through conversation and some outside guidance that we got, that we were able to refine. I think some of our initial discussions were a little blurry and could have caused some, you know, not intentional, but you know, just some of the byproducts of our not being clear with what the roles were at the beginning. I think this document really cleans that up and with direct purpose and what we're just, how we're trying to help, that's it. And leave it at that and stay in our lane.
Any other comments?
I think we have seven schools, but we also have a big transportation department with employees up there too, and the maintenance and food service. And somehow figure out a way to maybe include somebody to be involved with them too.
I'm wondering, Jim, if it makes sense that instead of, I think the original idea was seven board members, seven schools. But I hope I'm not speaking out of term when I say you express some concern as board president, all the things you already do, that maybe adding in this one more piece might be a big ask for you, which I appreciate. I'm also wondering if maybe it makes sense that instead of each being assigned to one school, that maybe where each two of us are assigned to a school and maybe assigned to two schools. So it's more of a shared lift. And then also add in what Dave is saying, transportation and maybe food service. So we're getting what we're looking for, which is to know what's going on, to have people feel supported. And also that no one person is being called upon to lift more than somebody else. And that we're all sort of equally sharing and no one's being overly burdened by what they're already giving as far as their time commitments.
Anybody else? Okay, so I'm hearing that we might want to actually change from one person a school to two people a school, all right? If we're going to do that, we would need the consensus of the board, obviously. So I guess I'm just wondering here, what do people think about an individual per school versus having two individuals per school? And then including transportation, facilities, food service, and having somebody also be involved with that?
Kind of like the pairing up idea. And if we can add others. So if there's seven schools and maybe we add transportation, you add food services, you add something else, and you get two each, so each group. And you're not in them, you're not in. So you don't have to do it.
Oh, no, I'm in, that's right.
Well, I'm just saying, then you have the six, you have the six of us.
Yeah.
You get 12 things, you split them up, you each get two. And you overrun the program, obviously, or whatever you want to call it. But you could add in others that way if you didn't want to do seven people for seven schools where you each get one thing.
Well, what I kind of like about that is we are all different. It's one of the things I think that makes such a strong board is there is a diversity of the membership. Not everybody works the same schedules, you know? And it may be that there are people who, the time of their life, they're on a certain work schedule where, boy, I am not getting this. I know there's a lot going on at this school and it's really good stuff, but I'm sorry, I just physically can't be there. The pairing would allow us to have that shared lift amongst us.
Yeah, let's just do a 1A and a 1B. And let's add what Dave talked about. And I think that'd be great, I think that'd be great.
Okay. Other thoughts on this? I think what we can do, if we have a consensus here, because we've just added a layer of complexity of assignment, I was thinking, you know, just dropping names in a hat or whatever. I think maybe what we would do, if that is available to us, that we, as a group here, we agree that this is what we're going to do and in this way. And then we decide off to the side how we're going to assign the actual schools. Is that something that we can do? Are people okay with that? And then we would send a notice out to the administrators and the school leaders, who has been assigned where. We make that a public knowledge. But just rather than the complexity of trying to figure that out at the moment, I was more in a mind of one per, that'd be a little easier. The two per me. Okay? So...
Should that communication go through like a man? Like if we do it in the near future? Like that doesn't come directly from us? I mean, that definitely goes through the superintendent.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we would absolutely do that. Yep.
Jim, I'll just ask that. We mentioned transportation and food service, but you also have buildings and grounds also.
Well, and this is kind of where, because this was just brought up right now, I don't want to necessarily pull the trigger and say, all these assignments are this concrete. Because there may be something, as you just thought of, that, hey, we really should have something along that lines. And this is called board liaisons. So what I'm just looking for right now is a consensus, a yes from everybody, that we're going to look at our seven buildings, we're going to look at our other group entities, and that we're going to agree of a shared lift of two people, two board members, per building slash entity. So we're good, yes? Okay, so I don't think this needs actually a board action. We can check that out if it needs to be formalized before the next meeting. But we can absolutely get going on this with schools starting and get these assignments done. And making sure that we have all of the groups necessary are covered. Okay? Great. All right, thank you, everybody. All right, next we have superintendent's report.
Hi. So I would, I said, welcome to the official start of the 23-24 school year. I hesitate to say welcome back because there have been a lot of people here working very hard all summer long, not only to prepare our buildings, but engaging in professional development, to learn our reading program, our math program, learning new teaching strategies and de-escalation behavior strategies with students. And as I'm seeing students walking up and down the hall, trying to find their lockers and follow their class schedule, we've had students here, the marching band has been here, many of our student athletes have been here. So it's the official start of the school year, but it's not welcome back for everybody. There's been lots of folks who have been with us all along. One of the things that I communicated recently with our administrative team and then to the broader district last week is really a desire for our district to start walking and talking and living our mission on a day-to-day basis of educating, inspiring, empowering our students. So as the administrative team sort of put their heads together and talked about how we launched the school district or the school year, with that in mind, of course, we wanted to focus on students. And so we posed the question to a handful of students, what does a teacher mean to you? And we created a video to share with our staff this morning. So I just thought it would be nice to play that for the board this evening. Am I just clicking this? There we go.
To me, a teacher is someone who is kind and comforts you no matter what type of day you're having. Also, a teacher pushes you to be the best version of yourself inside and outside the classroom.
A teacher means to help me learn.
To me, a teacher is someone who loves to help others reach their best potential. They're sharing knowledge with them.
A teacher means to me that they help me a lot and they inspire me to do my best.
A teacher means how they treat kids and how they like interact with them, how they help if they need help with work and stuff like that.
What a teacher means to me is someone who is excited to teach every day and wants to be a friend. They're someone you can trust and help you.
A teacher means to me as one that do other things and one teacher that was, do survivor.
A teacher means to me that they make me feel good.
To me, a teacher is someone who is there for me and wants to be there for me. They want to teach me new things and inspire me to be the best version of myself. A teacher is someone who will encourage me to pursue my dreams.
A teacher is someone who cares not to be announced in learning their things.
What a teacher means to me is another caring adult in my life that inspires me to be a hard worker and follow my dreams. My favorite teachers have been the ones who make learning exciting and really spend time in knowing.
A great teacher to me is someone who gets to know their students well and understands more than just what they see during the regular class day.
So that's how staff started their morning this morning. And then they engaged in some discussion through the lens of our mission of educating and inspiring and empowering our students, what does being a teacher mean to them personally? I think the common theme from our students is that relationship piece and making connections with teachers is what's most critical for them to learn. So it was a nice way to start the day this morning. All right, Matt, I'm experiencing technical difficulty. Bottom left. Okay, thank you. And just to follow that, as I alluded, there have been many folks who have been here all summer long. Many thanks to our maintenance and custodial crews who have worked tirelessly, especially some of our buildings that are under construction. They have been working around those construction folks to get our classrooms ready. Our principals, who are just as busy in the summer preparing for the school year as they are during the school year when students are here with us. Our faculty and staff, as I said, many of whom have worked through the summer tirelessly getting ready to welcome our students. Transportation and food services, who get our students to school and fed so that they are ready to learn every day. And then I just wanted to say a special thank you to Nancy Squires, who is not here today. In the intervening time between now and our last board meeting, Nancy quietly retired and she didn't want any hoopla or celebration. But we, of course, want to thank her for her many years of service to the district, and she will be missed.
Thank you very much.
Oh, one more.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm slow with my clicker. Just a couple of other updates. The board you have received, your wall calendars, they, we experienced some publication glitches. They should be on doorsteps in homes. If you didn't get it today, you should get it within the next day or so. They are ready and they're coming. Many of the school events have been highlighted in the school calendar. If they are not on the wall calendar, please check the district's website regularly so that you can stay informed of what's happening in our school buildings. It's a nice dovetail to the board liaison conversation because many of our homeschool association meetings, our open houses and back-to-school nights will be happening as soon as next week. So you can stay up to date there. And then, of course, fall sports will also be in full swing. So folks can check our athletics website for up-to-date information there. Now that's the end.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. So I have A, the special education board report, September 5th, 2023. B is the high school extra classroom report from July 23. C is the middle school extra classroom report, July 23. D are the minutes of our last regular board meeting, August 15. And E is the approval of the unaudited district financial report, July 22 through June 23. Just making the point that is the unaudited version. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sean. Any comments? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, Bob?
Good evening, everyone. Under Personnel, our item A is an administrative staff recommendation. And I'd like to recognize Andrew Rupert, who will be our new high school assistant principal with an effective start date of September 11. Andrew is here with us tonight with his family. So if you want to stand up quick, say hello. He's a Oswego graduate, what year, Andrew?
Second.
There you go. So we're glad to have him. So item A as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Thank you, David, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion? Other than welcome? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Items B through F are professional staff recommendations, resignation, leave of absence, probationary teacher and a teaching assistant, and regular substitutes and building substitutes. So items B through F as presented.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, David, any discussion? Heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Our next group is items G through K. They are support staff recommendations as presented.
Thank you, is there a motion, please? Thank you, Kristen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom, any discussion? Heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
And our last grouping is item L through P, which are substitutes, temporary employees, extra compositions, and volunteer recommendations. So items L through P as presented.
Great, is there a motion for L through P?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Sean, is there a second? Thank you, Kristen, any discussion? Heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, finance?
That's me.
Hi, finance.
Hi. Okay, so A is a contract with Auctions International as presented. This is for our surplus auctions.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tom, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, David, any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have items from the board.
Yeah, I just kind of want to recycle something I asked for, wanted some information on a couple of board meetings ago relative to busing. I know all school districts, especially ours, incurred challenges last year, specifically and especially with athletics, the changing of schedules and things like that. So I just wanted to learn a little bit of what we might have done in our offseason or what the numbers looked like to help us. Are we in a better spot as we start our new school year? What did we do? What did we find worked for us in getting the help that we needed to better the situation from last year? And I haven't, haven't gotten that yet.
So we did discuss this Wednesday morning in our agenda setting. I will let Lisa talk.
Hi. I'm all sorts of Nancy today. Okay, so information that was shared with me is we currently are providing transportation, 198 daily runs, which require 49 drivers. We have 57 qualified drivers on the roster, which does include four office staff members. We have six open runs, including two positions for employees on leave. And we do have 24 McKinney-Vento students. So McKinney-Vento students are students that are district students who became homeless, and we are required to transport them by law. We do travel as far as Sandy Creek, Mexico, Fulton, and Syracuse to transport those students. We have worked to, there are some substitute drivers. As school begins, the memo here says that all daily routes are covered with a small number of substitute drivers, four drivers and two more in training. Despite the best efforts to recruit and hire new drivers, they have yet to be able to fully address the staffing gap. And that, that is that national issue, as we've talked about. For athletics, however, we are working with Bernie Bus to fill bus service, to fill the gaps. They were helpful last year, and we're going to continue to do that. And they have explored Bernie Bus, Durham Bus, who have both agreed to help. Messages have been left for Golden Sun, for Student, and Land Fears as well. So it is something that's on the top of the priority list. I hope that answers your questions.
That's really good.
Yeah, yeah, so Wednesday morning, it was actually, we had only talked to, we, Nancy, had only talked to one of the bus companies, private. And they said, yes, but we're not going to help you with everything. So the discussion was, let's talk to every single private contractor who services our area and see what they say. To see that maybe we have to use two different groups or three different groups to make sure that everything's covered. So that's currently what we're looking at.
Is that something, Lisa, that, I know this isn't your primary responsibility?
That's okay.
That we might be able to get an update on in a month, you know, in a couple of board meetings, just to see how that's progressing?
We'll absolutely work together as a team to make sure all the information comes to you.
Thank you so much.
Lisa, are the, are, is there coverage for all of the athletic contests that are scheduled in the next two weeks?
It doesn't, I don't want to tell you yes because it's not specifically stated here. It does say that all daily routes are covered with a small number of substitute drivers. We do know that COVID illnesses seem to be kind of rising again, unfortunately. We're hopeful that it's not going to impact us in any capacity. But it does say, you know, they're working with Bernie to fill the gaps. And they, you know, continuing to diligently work at those pieces. So I, I believe, by what I'm reading here, I believe yes, but I don't want to definitively tell you yes.
Maybe, could that be updated in our weekly updates, Amanda? Just so we know if contests are being canceled due to transportation. Thanks.
Okay. Were you good? Any other items from any board members? All right, I'll just say again, welcome back to everybody. I know all of our, our teachers and our staff that have been working diligently. Today was the first official full day back. But as Amanda said, and we know you've been working. And we very much appreciate everything you've been doing and very much look forward to having all the students back with us tomorrow. So with that, there is a need for executive session. There will not be a need for a vote afterwards. So if I can have a motion to move to executive, please? I heard Kristen first, thank you. Thank you, Julie, second. All those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.